The meeting of June 3, 2024, going into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law 38, Chapter 1, A1, to discuss the physical condition of an employee, discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline and dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. Also to review the town council contract under Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to conduct strategy in sessions for preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Also the co-interim administrators, MOAs, to review those under Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And also to review and possibly approve the executive session minutes May 29, May 6, and May 20. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. We'll return as close to 6:30 as possible.[114.85]
Over at the meeting of June 3rd, Select Board, please rise for salute to flag and please remain standing there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence to our veterans, both here and abroad, and both past and present for their service. Thank you. Please be seated. This meeting is being recorded by DCTV and available at DCTV.com or on their YouTube channel. There are no members participating remotely, so all votes will be voice vote unless the chair determines a roll call vote. All right. We have zero appointments today. So the first item on the new business is we have John Collins, who's the Municipal Broadband Committee, looking to be appointed on the committee. John, please come on up. Hi. Give us a, introduce yourself and give us a very brief resume of your technology experience and why you want to be a member of this board.
Sure. My name is John Collins. I'm the Director of Instructional Technology for the West Bridgewater Public Schools. I oversee all classroom technology and I have a general understanding of infrastructure within our town and within our district. I've lived in Dartmouth since 2016. I'm hap, I was approached about possibly joining this board and looking more into it. I'm just, I'm excited for the opportunity. I think having a choice in broadband options within the town is good for the residents. And I'm excited to see what opportunities this will bring for the town.
Terrific. Sounds good. All right. Board members, any questions on Mr. Collins?
Resume was impressive.
Unbelievable. I can't, you fell out of the sky, sir. Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Ms. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Yes.
On the motion, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. All right.
Thank you very much.
You get a letter from our board, then you go see Sarah downstairs, get sworn in, and go to your first meeting.
Oh, right now?
No, not now.
Not that easy. Not that easy.
Receive a letter, and then you can go get sworn in.
Actually, we'll find out.
Government doesn't work that quick.
Thank you, John.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have the DNRT Conservation Restriction, map 79, lot 31, 34-1. Mr. Wildman. Almost had to say Dexter. Where's Dexter lately? How's Dexter doing, by the way?
He's good. We see him every once in a while when he's not out enjoying his retirement.
Good for him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Select Board members, for having me here on relatively short notice. As you may have seen in my cover letter, we are under a little bit of a time crunch to bring this before you. The, in short, the DNRT would like to grant a conservation restriction to Mass Audubon as a condition of a $179,000 grant from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs that we'd like to bring to Dartmouth for our protection of the 43-acre Flag Swamp Bog property. This is a wonderful opportunity, not just from a conservation standpoint of conserving the land. It's going to provide over a mile of trail system, which we hope to open this fall, or this winter. And as part of this sale that we negotiated with the land seller, we were able to transfer a 300,000 million, excuse me, 300,000 gallon per day water withdrawal license and transfer that to the town, so that could help with the Town's Water Management Act permitting. So this grant that I'm referring to, again, the conservation restriction, we're proposing to be held by Mass Audubon, which means no inspection or other responsibilities for conservation or the town. And it allows us to access this grant money. I'm going to pass out a map of our proposed trail system.
Thank you.
For the property. This meets with the open space and land goals of adding
Great, thank you.
more recreational opportunities in North Dartmouth.
Thank you.
And we're really excited to be able to do this without the impact to Town finances, CPC, any of those things. Just here to ask for your support for the conservation restriction.
Okay. Board members have any questions?
No.
What say the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick comment, Nick. These are the types of, you know, CRs that I hope at some point we'll be able to consolidate information on in case we need to do something at the landfill down the road. You know, if we need to expand that footprint for the landfill, I'd really love to be able to come to you from the board and say, you know, here are a list of the CRs that we've been involved in, say, in the last three to five years. You know, this is the amount of space that we've protected for DEP and maybe even the EPA in order to get an additional slice. Hopefully, we don't need to do that, but if need be, I'd like to be able to come to you and ask if we could get that data from you, including a parcel like this.
Absolutely. You know, from day one, I took this job, I knew that the Town of Dartmouth is our most important partner. We're always willing to talk about ideas, concerns, questions. And we've done so with all the different departments through the two years that I've been here and certainly with the Select Board as well. So feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. On the motion, any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, none? Granted. Passed.
Very much. Appreciate that.
While that's being passed around, next, we have a stop sign request of Milton and Holland Street. We have a letter from Chief Andre from Fire District 1 regarding a stop sign at Holland and Milton Street. We also have a letter from Officer Canario from the Traffic Safety Division. And we also have a letter from Tim Barber from the DPW, along with a stop sign checklist. So, Chief, line up. Chief Andre from District 1 Fire Department?
I put a letter in. We had a couple of serious accidents back in January. Both involved a person who was cutting through Holland Street onto Milton and created quite an accident there. And just recently, there was another one. So we're just asking your consideration to maybe adopt some kind of a stop sign on each side of Holland Street to prevent people maybe from out of town that don't realize where they're going. Just pulling out right onto that right away. So Milton Street tends to be, you know, a right away kind of right shortcut through the Slocum Road between Slocum and Sharp. So you do get quite a bit of traffic and people are traveling at quite a good speed there. So before something bad happens, we just saw the need for it and put the request in.
So I have a question. Will the state need to be involved in this?
Go ahead. Open up.
Well, it was under my impression the years that they did get involved. So...
Officer Canario, do you want to answer that?
I believe now we, the request. The request that we submitted from the Traffic Division was going by all the standards in the State Uniform Code Manual. So those are the requirements to follow to make it a legal stop sign, to make sure it follows the state code.
I just want to make sure it's legal.
Yeah, we do it correctly. We make sure that it's within all the proper requirements before we just request one.
So this stop sign checklist can be used on any street, any intersection in town, correct? Such as Milton and Sharp?
It would be, yeah, well, the checklist, there's certain criteria you have to meet in the Uniform Code Manual, which would justify the need or requirement for a stop sign. So there's a checklist. It has to have three of how many of them are on there to qualify. So that's good for any intersection on a, any public way.
And that includes prior accidents, any deaths? Is that correct?
Yes. That's part of it.
Yes.
I mean, it goes by traffic volume, visibility. If people are driving reckless and cause accidents, the stop signs are not allowed to be used to control speed. We have to explain that to the public all the time. They are not intended to control speed. If there's a speed problem, we address the speed problem. We don't put stop signs up. They have their own purpose, as long as that's what the checklist is for, to make sure that they're being installed for the right purpose and not to slow cars down.
Right. Okay. Thanks. So you feel that the need for a stop sign on Holland Street is actually probably good? I mean, I was reviewing the street itself mostly through GPS, through, you know, Sky, Sky Views Vision. I don't want to give them. And I mean, I can see that because it is right before the curve. So you feel that it's warranted?
Yes, absolutely. More so because of visibility, because it's a lined up street going right across Milton. And unfortunately, a fact of today is people drive distracted using GPS and they just follow that. They don't actually look at the road all the time. They're watching where the car's telling them to go. And if they don't see the intersection, that's how accidents like this usually occur.
All right. Board members have any questions? Question? Mr. Tadlam? A timetable. If we approve this tonight, is this something that can happen pretty quick?
That would be something for Mr. Barber. I mean, I'd be more than willing to help put it up, but that's not really our job.
I love it.
Is it unfair to get a commitment from Mr. Bob?
Yes, if this is approved tonight, a work order will go in tomorrow and it should be, should be installed within about a week.
What, what? Other than just a straight stop sign, what other things can be done to educate the people going through those intersections that this is now a stop intersection? Other than having an officer at the, there, telling them that this is now a stop? How do we, do we write the word "stop" on the ground? Do we put a banner up? Do we put one of those flashy, flashy stop signs that annoy everybody?
Well, on a case like we have on Chase Road in Russell's Mills, where we put that flashing stop, stop sign, it did a lot of good. We just installed guardrails there too, upon request of the resident, because even when there's an accident at that intersection, they end up in the front yard. So the, I think, you know, similar like this street, it's a four-way. You know, it used to be a three-way, and then I think Holland Street was extended on another side. So all the other streets in this area off of Milton that are four-way have stop signs on the secondary street, where Milton is the collector's street, except for Holland. So it's definitely a good idea to put a stop sign there. I mean, you can put a "stop ahead" sign if you have the distance. And you can, you can, you can paint a stop line at the intersection. You don't have to put SDOP, but if it gets to that point, you can. You can put the stencil, but we can paint the stop line.
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's been years since there's nothing there, and then all of a sudden, there's something there. So there has to be some educational, you know, attempts made to let them know that this is what's going on. So, okay.
A question more so for Tim.
Yes.
So in this situation, public roads, both of them, right? I've got a constituent that called, asked about private way entering onto Brownell, Brownell Avenue, right? I think we've got three residents down there, and the concern is it's a private way. I don't know how that affects if we, DPW can even get involved or the town can even get involved. But he was inquiring, and honestly, I have no idea. But the problem is, he has guests at these three houses. They don't know the intersection, and they're right out onto Brownell Avenue. And I'm sure we've got data on it, some crash data. But I don't know if you know about entry from a private way, if they can do it themselves.
Yeah, so it's not typically something that we'd install. It might be something that would be required during the subdivision review process. But I don't know if you have any input on a private road installing a stop sign?
If it meets the criteria, even private roads are public to an extent by the extended definition of a public way. It's open for invitees and so forth. It's not a gated community. The general public thinks the road is a road. So entering a public way, then if it requires a stop sign, we would suggest it. Although they are coming off private, the accident's going to occur on the public way. It's to protect the public way.
This is on Brownell. We've got it on the, on one side, but from the private side, it's, there's nothing there. And he's had guests just pull right out onto Brownell. So he didn't know whether he could just buy one for, you know, the $38 sign you get from, you know, wherever and do that legally, or if he should involve the town and get it done.
Well, if it's placed, if a stop sign is placed on the private property, there's questions of its enforceability. He can put that. He can put whatever he'd like there. But that's something, if that's an intersection you'd want us to look at, we'd go look at it.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add on this one that we're here for is if, my recommendation would be if the board approves this, it's because of a hazardous condition. And as Barbara said, it might take up to a week to put up. I would strongly recommend that they have them go out there and put temporary stop signs up immediately. If we're going to sit here and agree that it's an issue, I don't want an accident tomorrow. We've been waiting for signs to come in by FedEx. They have temporary ones on rims of old rims that are welded. Do we use them? I'm sure you've seen them up at Allen and Slocum when the lights go out. I would think to protect the town's best interest of any liability, I'd stick the temporary signs out there.
So if there is a motion to approve this, it would be based upon the hazardous conditions that exist on the road? So what, any further questions from the board? Okay. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion made to approve the installation and a temporary fix until it's permanently installed.
Okay, and based upon
Due to the hazardous conditions.
Based upon the hazardous conditions of the intersection?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none. Unanimous. Okay. Got it. Get it done. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have the DEP statewide Total Maximum Daily Load of Pathogen Impaired Water Bodies Draft Report. This report was sent to me, and I wanted to make the board aware of this report. I can tell you exactly, this is DEP at its best. This is DEP holding one single public hearing on this without notifying anybody's interest in this at all. Even our local Board of Health was not aware of this happening, and they and they had to... They found out about this through a reporter. DEP did not contact the town. DEP, I'm sure, also did not contact many of the communities regarding this report. This is DEP at its finest in secrecy and just absolute ridiculousness. And I asked Mr. Michaud to come here to comment on what the report basically says and how the town can try to convince DEP to be a partner in getting this looked at and taking care of it. Because the Pasca-Mansett River is a major source of our wells on Chase Road. So, Mr. Michaud?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. For the record, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health for the Town of Dartmouth. So just to back up a little bit on what Chairman McDonald mentioned, is that on April 24th, Mass DEP issued a press release of this plan to address pathogen impaired waterways of the Commonwealth. By pathogens, what they're meaning is certain indicator pathogens like E. coli, fecal caliform, or enterococci. These pathogens are indicators of forms of whether it be wastewater from septic systems, from wastewater treatment plants, combined sewer overflows, stormwater, pet waste, agriculture. We didn't learn about the press release until after the public hearings occurred earlier in May. One in person on May 8th in Worcester between 1:00 and 3:00 PM, which does not avail itself to working people to attend. They held another hearing the very next day between 6:00 and 8:00 PM by Zoom, neither affording its availability to some of our population that may not feel comfortable attending by Zoom or able to. Fortunately, on May 20th, a reporter from the New Bedford Light reached out to the town and said, "We'd like your comment on the Pasca-Mansett River being designated as a pathogen impaired waterway of the Commonwealth." I looked into the documents at that time and discovered that the testing occurred in 2005 and in 2013. In 2005, they tested about six times, and in 2013, about five times. And I'm not using that to diminish at all the validity or the concern with the river. But at no time did they ever tell us about the testing that they were doing, the results that they were compiling, nor the public hearings that they were going to offer. And this is an opportunity lost for the Commonwealth, because it's going to require all of us to participate in this if we're going to make a difference to protect our Pasca-Mansett River. And we also have the Shingle Island that's impaired. Now, a year ago, I stood in this room and before that, probably for about a year, you know, going back a year and a half to talk about another TMDL. So this process is part of what they call a TMDL. It's an acronym, Total Maximum Daily Load. It assigns ultimately to the Clean Water Act. And the one that we talked about a little over a year ago was about nitrogen. This time, it's about pathogens. And again, at that time, we complained about how long it took to get to this point, an opportunity lost, and some of the validity of the data. Not going to talk about the validity of this data. What I'm going to talk about is the opportunity that we're going to lose, and we've lost. Hopefully, Mass DEP will, in the 11th hour, because the written public comment closes on June 10th, hopefully, in the coming days, the next four days, the commissioner exercises some discretion and realizes that unlike last year, we're not driven by this by some lawsuit. This is being just an arbitrary decision by staff to assign June 10th as the cutoff date, that she extends it much further and provides outreach to the stakeholders that is listed in their documents as being necessary, listed in their mission statements as being necessary for their success, for the Commonwealth's success. Because without that, this is going to end up being nothing more than another study put on a shelf like the TMDL for the Slocum River and all the ones for the Cape Cod that sat there for a better part of a decade or more, until such time that the Conservation Law Foundation sued the Commonwealth for failure to protect. The Commonwealth folded into the settlement agreement with those regulations that we discussed so much last year. So hopefully, in the next four days, we may hear something. I've been working with Senator Montigny's office to see what kind of conversations that we can have to try to get that opportunity. Because if this passes, it just becomes a document on the shelf and we'll wait until the problem gets worse and we're forced by an external force. Because at this point in time, you know, I sit in the meetings, Mr. Vitale hears me, in the internal meetings when we're talking about development, we're facing dual interests. How do we protect our environment? How do we protect our for what we want? And how do we continue new growth and affordable housing? To a certain degree and to a large degree, they're not compatible. Because as we, even with sewer and we urbanize environments, we bring new sources of pollution. We've removed some, but we've removed the nature's ability to attenuate those pollutants that come from the atmosphere. And we create new ones as well from things like pet waste. So hopefully, our discussions tonight will yield maybe some awareness by Mass DEP, by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to extend this opportunity and to do some true outreach. And if there's any questions about any of the content in the report, be happy to answer it. I'd also like to note that we have begun some water testing on the river to try to duplicate the results, to try to pinpoint where some of these sources of indicators, these pathogens are sourcing from, and then look at whose responsibility statutorily can address these sources of point source or non-point source pollution. But that's going to take some time. And, you know, we are looking at it. We began testing last week. Thank you.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Michaud and the rest?
I have a comment.
Mr. Tadlebaum?
I've always felt that the work that's being done on the Buttonwood Brook with the town, with the DEP, with the Buzzetts Bay Coalition, and there's remediation being done. It's a gigantic job, but it's something positive going on. And I've always felt that the next step was going to be, and I think the Buzzetts Bay Coalition feels the same, that we could then move on, learn some lessons, and move on to the Pasca-Mansett as well. The... It's clear that the DEP has a tactic that's pretty common and regular. Raise hell and then get people's attention and then try to do the work that makes sense, which would be in your case, your recommendation to get an extension so we can then participate in the process. Is there anything we can do from this office to address the DEP and through our state reps and Senator to... That would help in any way, you think, is that we just have to wait and see what they do on that June 10th day you're talking about?
So at this point, as far as engaging, you know, our legislator to provoke conversation, to extend it, you know, I feel, you know, everything is being done through the Senator's office. And we've had a lot of conversations over the last week during a very busy time where the Senate is debating the Commonwealth's budget.
Right.
I think we should be prepared as a town to address the document and to address it from a lost opportunity perspective, that this isn't something that we're opposed to, that we need participation in, so that we can engage our stakeholders and begin these meaningful discussions on how we're going to protect this waterway here in Dartmouth, which I don't believe should be any different throughout the Commonwealth. If it didn't happen here, fairly certain at this point, based on some of the conversations, it didn't happen anywhere else. And shortly after learning this, when I reached out to Mass DEP's Southeast Regional Director, one of just a handful, Southeast, Northeast, Central, and Western, so just four, he said, "Huh, funny. They didn't tell me. You'd think they'd tell the Southeast Regional Director."
Yeah, it is my intention to request from the board that we send a letter to the Mass DEP requesting that they extend the comment period, and also to send copies to our legislative bodies. So if, you know... And I think if, between Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Michaud, they can come up with that letter to send out as soon as possible.
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Tadlebaum and seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Okay, just before this, I would like to have this report also shared with Conservation. I'm sure Mark already has it, but just to make sure that Mark does have it. And also send a copy to the Buzzetts Bay Coalition, make sure that they're aware of it also. So... On the motion, any questions?
Sean, I just have a quick comment. The dates that you mentioned, September 12th, 2005, September 29th, 2013, August 2005. You know, I'm just thankful that Mark and Chris Marky are aware of this, that they were heavily involved with you in the last issue that we had. And hopefully, we get the timeframe that we need. You know, nobody wants clean water more than the Town of Dartmouth, but there are ways to go about it. So...
Well, this is the same, but this is part of the DEP playbook, where they take data that's at least 10 to 15 years old and put it in a report that's new and fresh and go on that basis. They did this with Title V. They took reports from almost two decades ago to develop these regulations. And they were wrong. And they're doing the same thing. So what's the updated data on the lake, on the Shingle Island and on the Pasque? You know, I mean, we know the DPW does testing all the time. So we should have that information, at least at the well end of it. So we should know what's going on. So, I mean, this is just typical DEP bureaucratic BS. And, you know, if there isn't a department in this Commonwealth that needs to be totally overhauled, it's this one. They're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're not protecting the good. They're protecting their jobs. And they're protecting their backsides. Plain and simple. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose none, unanimous. Work on that letter, get it out. Yes, Mr. Michaud?
So just for a point of clarification, Mr. Garrett is aware he was one of several town officials. That was copied on the email from New Bedford Light. And last week, when I was meeting with Mr. Gulat from the Buzzetts Bay Coalition, the Buzzetts Bay Coalition is aware of this as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the appraisal of 247 Russell's Mills Road. Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Vitale.
I think Mr. Vitale can come up and disinteract.
Good evening. Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So inside your packet, you have a copy of the appraisal report that we received this past week, just as well as just a brief cover memo, just providing a summary of the findings of that report. So what the appraiser did was he provided four cost estimates based on different scenarios. So one of which is the current property under existing zoning, both for just that front area where the building's located, as well as the back area where currently EPA is using that as a staging area. The second set of scenarios are based on if the property could be rezoned to allow for multifamily, both, again, just that front area where the building's located, and then if the back area where the EPA is included in that. So, you know, as part of his summary, you know, he did look at comparable properties, you know, within the area. One thing to note within it is he does mention in several occasions in the study that this project would see significant upfront costs. And as you can see, just based on the estimates, the value in the property would be if the town could have this be multifamily. You know, but with that, certainly open to any questions you may have and...
All right. Board members, any questions on the report? Mr. O'Neill? Is anyone here from Real Worth appraising? Chris?
He is not here this evening, no. Certainly, if there's additional questions from the board after this meeting, I could refer those to him and provide a follow-up. One additional thing I just want to make a note of is within the town meeting warrant for tomorrow, you know, we're not asking town meeting to set a sale price. After we conducted some of our research with town council, they found it is within the town's or the board's purview to set that sale rate. So recommendation, should town meeting, you know, give their approval to sell the property, that is a discussion that we could have at a later date with the board.
Yeah, my only question to them would be, you know, have they run into this type of scenario before? I know the resume is pretty lengthy as far as education goes, but real world experience about this type of scenario and circumstance?
I think I can help with that. They did the same study in 2015 for the town, on the same piece of property, in the same analysis. So because we were on a time crunch and the board was looking for the same information, we asked them first to follow up and see if they could redo the appraisal. So they have experience doing this specific type of appraisal.
I know that Lieb was involved in 2015.
Yes, so they were provided a copy of that. And just one other note about the comparables. So I believe it's page 53 of the report they start, but you can see the comparable properties that have been on the mark as of recently. So tried to get current comparables.
See, the comps are one thing. It's the interpretation of the comp that, you know, where the experience really comes in. So, I mean, we've got... I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people that take a look at this and give us their opinion, but... Okay. Thanks, Sean.
I'm just sorry that it came so late in the game. We requested this and quite a while ago. My... I'm looking at a... They were contacted in March, after March 25th meeting about getting this done. So it's unfortunate that it's taken this long.
Well, at the time, we contacted the appraiser. They told us that they were months out. We let the board know. The board was aware when we contracted. They had the board signed off on the contract. So we knew we would not be getting this information until the end of May, which is, they were right on time with their schedule.
Yeah.
Jim? Mr. Tadlebaum?
I think this appraisal speaks to the complexity of trying to pull this off. But the hard work, should we get approval from town meeting to go ahead and do the research? That's when the hard work starts, because we have many restrictions that we have to follow to try to make it happen regarding zoning variances or the selling price in the surrounding land use, et cetera. So I think that this gives us a guideline, but it's a very unique situation because of the condition of the building, but also the restrictions we have to follow as a board to make sure it happens in the public good.
Well, I mean, as far as the appraisal goes, I mean, I'll read the summary that Mr. Vitale put up. So there's some concerns right now with the site. Number one, the major concern is that the back lot is being used by the EPA in the Bliss Corner area. So if that possibly... So if that parcel, if the entire parcel was going to be sold, then we, as the town, lose a staging area for the cleanup of another area. There's also consideration of the tower that's behind the building, that either has to be moved, or it has to be a deed restriction keeping it there. So based upon that, the .92 acre parcel, 132 slash 1, under the current zoning, is estimated to be about $120,000. The full acre, the full parcel, 1.97, is at $125,000. The building itself, based upon the hypothetical condition that a zoning change would allow the existing building to be converted to 10 residential units of 13 to 1500 square feet, with the restriction that all parking would be provided in a common parking garage without solid walls located below the living area or within the detached garages, that's 610,000. The entire parcel is 630,000. So you have really two separate areas. So it'll have to be determined as town meeting as to whether or not to do, but right now, I would be very remiss in doing anything, because I would want to see that staging area continue to be used, because as much as it is, it provides goodwill between the town and the EPA. And if it was Mass DEP, well, maybe I'd have a different thought about that. But I think, I think right now, the town is working well with the EPA, and I really don't want to jeopardize that. So I'm not sure how I'm going to, have to really hard, think about this really hard, but I'm, right now, I'm leaning not to doing anything at this point in time, even if the town, even if town meeting gave us the authority to sell it. I don't know if I would do anything at this point in time, so. Okay, so we will see what happens tomorrow, and it'll tell us a lot. All right. Moving on my agenda here. Very large appraisal.
Thank you for this information.
I guess the only other question that I would have, Sean, is where are we putting this? You know, how are we making this so that people can gain access to it?
So we have our engagement portal, and we can certainly, tomorrow, have our communications coordinator to get that up there under a separate page, as well as some of just the prior appraisal was done, the pertinent information.
It's a public document, so it should be there, so.
And it's available from our office if anyone needs a copy of it. It is rather large, so if we can send it to you via email, that would be preferred if it's future use.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the town meeting, thank you, Chris, sorry. Town meeting land acknowledgement agreement. This is something being brought up by Ms. Brooks. Ms. Brooks?
Yes. As part of the Indigenous Peoples' Culture and History Committee, we've been working for a while to draft a land acknowledgement agreement. And you may recall that several months ago, we sent you a draft copy, asking that that copy then be sent out to three different tribes with local ties for their thoughts. Each one of them provided us with information, which we looked at, and we recrafted our land acknowledgement agreement. I will be totally transparent, each group that contacted us added their lens to our statement, which is all honesty. One of the things, we wanted to be more global in our land acknowledgement agreement than the tribes themselves wanted. And we feel that the wording that we have come up with at this point best represents the input we had and the working group, the work that we've done. So this, the memo reads that "The town of Dartmouth acknowledges the land on which we gather as their traditional and ancestral home of the Wampanoag Nation, and many diverse indigenous people connected to the land. We take this opportunity to thank and honor the original caretakers of this land, their past, their present, and all future generations." And the Indigenous Peoples' Culture and History Committee is looking for the select board to endorse this, and then we would ask that this land acknowledgement agreement be sent to other boards and departments within the town, so that if they have a meeting in the future where they feel that they need to read a land acknowledgement statement, this would be the one that they would use. Also, the group is working to extend the Dartmouth Historic Trail by including some sites that are specific to our native past, and we would include the land acknowledgement agreement on a kiosk as well.
Board members?
I was involved in the process with Mrs. Brooks, and I fully endorse it. I think it is meaningful and should be read at opportune times over the year, at important meetings.
So my question is, is when would this be read? So we, the select board has it at its next meeting, and we adopt this. When, is that going to be read at the beginning of the meeting, or when there's some type of an event concerning land, or?
We've seen it being used in other communities at the start of every meeting. What we would ask is that it be used in Dartmouth to start our two town meetings, and the school department is looking to use it when they do the convocation, which is in the fall, when they start back to school. Ryan Shea, the principal at the high school, would also like to use it when he does commencement.
Okay.
But we would like to share it with other boards, if those boards feel that it's something that they need to incorporate, that this would be the statement that's read. So there would be an official statement.
Right, we can also put this on the portal, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve, I suppose.
To endorse.
Indorse, yes.
And to pass to other, all the other committees in town. Okay, so is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattelbaum. On the motion, any questions?
Should we include some recommendations about the significant dates, those meetings you mentioned, and also optional by the, they may be looking for some direction on this from us?
I think that would be the IPC and H committee responsibility.
All right, so after this is done, we can, our next meeting, we can send something.
Does that committee have that kind of authority?
Yeah, the ones who came up with this, so they would be the ones to say, this was endorsed by the select board, we are requesting that you read these, you know, at this point in time.
Well, we included it to this board, and it is our hope that this statement will be read at the opening of the spring and fall town meetings, and at the discretion of the select board, any other time is warranted. Statement should be shared with all other town departments and committees, so that as they see fit, they too will use this land acknowledgement statement.
That's distributed from the committee or from this board, Ms. Brooks?
It'd be from this board, no, when we vote in favor.
I was asking for...
We're endorsing, we're endorsing what that committee has requested. It would come from that committee.
Is that what you're recommending, Mr. Brooks?
It certainly could be. Once it's endorsed by the select board, we, I could certainly then draft something to be shared with departments and other committees.
Will that Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none unanimous. All right, next is the...
I don't love that.
No, I know. Okay, is the ADA Coordinator's stipend MOA, which I don't think is in our packet. Or is it after the Harbor Master?
No, it's page, yeah, 271.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Oh, there it is, okay. All right, buzz it through. Okay. All right, so what we're looking at is the ADA Coordinator, which would be Randall Bassett, Director of Inspection Services, Zoning Enforcement Officer. The stipend will be $5,000 annually, paid on a weekly basis. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions?
The stipend starts in 2025.
Yes, March, the, March 25th.
He's already started, he's already started doing it.
He's doing the work, but the stipend itself doesn't start until then.
Yeah, he's not, he's gonna, he'll start the stipend on his year anniversary, but he's going to start immediately.
Right, right. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none unanimous. Next, we have the Harbor Master Employment Agreement, contract ratification. Finally, done. And everybody seems to be happy about it, and board's pleasure.
I'm going to move it forward. I see that the Harbor Master has agreed to our terms, so I think we're safe to say that we can sign this.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? In favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Unanimously approved.
I guess did this take?
Took too long. All right, next item on the agenda is the co-interim town administrator's memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement. MOU, MOA, MOU. All right, so this was, this was, the job functions are clearly outlined, where most of the financial stuff, Mr. Carrero will be taking care of, the daily administration of the offices and the affairs of the town, Mr. Vitale will be taking care of, the preparation for warrants and articles of special town meetings, both of them. The hiring, supervision, termination, department heads determined by town general bylaws, both of them. General administrative responsibilities, both of them. Direct supervision of department heads and town departments, both of them. So pretty much, they're going to be working together, keeping the select board informed of the needs of the town, that's Mr. Vitale. As I said, the financial, preparing the annual budget, capital improvement program, long-term financial forecast will be, the lead will be Mr. Carrero, but they're both, when they say lead, they'll both be working together, but the lead is there. So this is pretty much a shared thing. And the additional compensation for this, for both positions, will be an additional, just under $3,400 a week for this position, which fits well within the overall bubble of like towns and town administrators and whatnot, so. Board, have any questions?
Now, I appreciate the fact that it's as articulated as it is for whose job is doing responsibility for what, which aspect.
Okay. Do I have a motion from any member of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? None unanimous. Okay, we got our co-town administrators starting Monday.
Shortly.
Starting Monday. All right, town administrator search. This was put on, we were hoping to have a third proposal. That third proposal is due sometime...
Next week.
Next week. So we will just hold off on that until we get that. And the third proposal is coming from David Kressman himself. So I'll be looking forward to seeing that proposal. All right. Town administrator update for your last...
Yes, I have really nothing to update. Town meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM.
What a way to end.
It's been a pleasure working in the town, I've enjoyed working with everybody. I think we've accomplished a lot in my six years here, I really look back, and when I take the time to look at it, the town has come a long way in six years. I think we've shown that. Still has a long way to go, there's lots of good projects. I take a lot of pride in the fact that the town is taking a long-term approach to many things, doing a lot more studies, and preparing for the future. I think it was a fun project to show that a lot of the capital that the town requires over the next 50 years is affordable, and can be done, and I really believe the town is an asset in this area, and the community needs to support the town in what it needs to do for future generations, because I think there's a lot of people that want to take advantage of what the town has to offer. So it's been a pleasure, and I look forward to moving on.
On behalf of the board, Mr. McGinnis, I want to thank you for your six years of service for the town. There's definitely, as I stated before, your fingerprints are all over this town, it's to see what has been done, what the improvements have been made technologically, and even operational. You've done a good job, and I for one greatly appreciate that, and I can only wish you the very best down in Maryland. Good luck.
Which is a very different job than this one.
It's an extremely different job. It's very close to what I do in my profession, so good luck. No business.
No new updates.
No new updates. All right, so we have the minutes of May 6th, May 13th, and May 20th. Board's pleasure?
I have read through all of them, and I did not find any errors, I felt that they were...
I had, there was one typo, very minor, on May 20.
May 20?
The BJ store was sized at 10,000 square feet as opposed to 101,000 square feet. I told you it was minor.
All right, so we'll make that change.
That would be a teeny tiny BJ store.
Yes, a very small store.
Thank you for reading with such...
Tiny store.
That's called a close read, Mr. Tattelbaum, thank you.
So with that changed, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none unanimous. Did they sign it? They have? All right, so it's just me? Yeah, all right. All right, select board updates. All right, members have any updates?
No.
All right, I do, Ms. Brooks?
I will.
I'm sure you, yep, okay. What do you got?
I just wanted to say that up until a few hours ago, every high school spring sport team had made it into tournament. I've been made aware that one was eliminated in the first round, but it was very exciting for all of them to make it. Also, I have attended the Bristol Agricultural School graduation last week, an outdoor event, so it was, it was well done. And again, they celebrate each and every student, whether they're moving on to college, going to work in the family business, open their own business, take a gap year. It's a wonderful campus, it's a wonderful opportunity for students who enjoy not only just agriculture, but also landscape design... also landscape design and animal therapy and all kinds of stuff. It's a great school. Yesterday, Ms. O'Neill and I attended the Dartmouth High School graduation, which was held indoors. And as warm as it may have been inside, I think it would have been a lot hotter under the sun if we were in the stadium. So, I understand why the high school chooses to do it inside, and I certainly applaud that. They were done in an hour and 15 minutes with 249 graduates, so that was a pretty impressive feat. It was also nice to see a number of students being cheered for, not just by their own parent, but also by their fellow students and their community. And that's a real testament to the work that they've done at Dartmouth High School. And this Friday, I will attend the New Beaufort Voak graduation on behalf of the select board, and I look forward to that.
Thank you.
That's it.
I appreciate that. I know I couldn't attend the graduation because I had a really important softball tournament that the granddaughter was in, so I had to go see that. All right. I do have one update. Unfortunately, I was not -- we were not able to recognize Mr. Gracy at one of our meetings. I was able to go to the care facility that Mr. Gracy is currently rehabbing in, and I presented him with the -- with our thanks and the crystal that the board presented to him. He is still working on getting better. He looks well. He does want to get out. He does want to come home, and as does his -- as a vet, does want to get him home also. So, I did tell Mr. Gracy that, you know, that if we -- he needed anything, just to give me a call, to let us know, we'd be more than happy to help him out in his need and also with a vet, so. But he does -- he did thank the board for the recognition, and he wished us all well.
Thank you for doing that, Sean.
Okay.
I'm going to add one more update, which is the Memorial Day Parade. Our veterans agent does an excellent job and runs himself ragged the day of the parade, making sure that everyone is in the right place. And they had presentations at the bridge, the cemetery, and the final one at the former police station. And the parade was well-attended, and the marching groups were excellent. And it was nice to see so many veterans actually in the parade. So, it was very nice.
That's good. Okay. Ms. Guducci, you had requested to be recognized.
Well, I guess I could say I'm a little lost for words, because I'm confused. I was asked to attend this select board meeting. I believe my name was on the agenda somewhere.
Yep.
Probably related to the appraisal of 247 Russell's Mills Road. And it was supposedly an establishment of a committee, mini or whatever, what have you, in February, in which we offered to help with this, as Mr. Tattelbaum mentioned, a very complex issue. We were never given that opportunity. All of us were willing, myself, Christian, and we never heard a peep from the select board. Then we get -- I get the appraisal, and there are errors in the appraisal, one of which is the antenna on the tower, and the other is, he keeps talking about a parking garage below the building, but at the same token, he talks about the fact that there are supporting walls in there, so it could not be used for parking underneath. So, if we need more time, the housing production plan needs an update, and people should be paying attention to what was said in the master plan and the need for senior housing, and we're still not talking about any of it. So, when is this all going to happen?
That's a good question. As to the mini committee, whatever came with that.
So, the board created a committee that was myself, the assistant, Chris, and Sue, a member from the historic commission. They appointed Sue Guducci. Sue's been involved in the proposal that we put together for the appraisal. She was aware of that. She received that. She visited the site with the appraiser. You contacted us and said that we didn't contact you. Chris Vitale showed you the email that he sent to you that you forgot that you had received. Last week, we contacted you when the appraisal was complete, to see if you wanted to meet to review the appraisal. You did not get back to us. We put you on the meeting invite as a courtesy, because you're part of the committee. The board asked for an appraisal to be done. The appraisal was not to what to do about senior housing. The appraisal was about what is the value of the building. That's what's provided. I think you're looking for other things, which the board can address, but they're not related to the building.
She was supposed to help develop that whole article.
Please, if you --
We --
Wait to be recognized, okay?
We were exactly -- and that's exactly right. We were asked to assist with the development of that article.
That's true. If you go back, you were -- the board wanted to look at selling the property and getting an appraisal. That's what you were put on, the committee of you, myself, and Chris was put together for that purpose. You had other things that you had requested. The board did not pursue that. The board is pursuing the sale of the property. So, you're looking for other things, the use of the property. That's above and beyond what the board was looking for, that is above and beyond what the article is at town meeting.
And you didn't think it was worth it to give the different scenarios for that particular property?
We did. There's two appraisals.
No, you did not, because I brought a copy to the day that we went for the site visit, and I asked Mr. Troren if he had received it, and he said no, and I handed it to him.
He did the exact same appraisal in 2015 with the same criteria. We asked him to do the same thing this time. He was doing the exact same appraisal. So, he was very aware. He's already done. So, he updated his appraisal from 2015, which included what the historic committee had asked for, what you had asked for, to look at using the building for housing as well as just using it for open space. And that's what it's included in the appraisal.
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
I think this board promised that we would open up the possibility of selling the property, but needing permission from town meeting. And that's what we've asked. That's what the language put in. And language, one can say it's vague. One can say -- but my input I got from the language, and I had nothing to do with it, it's the legal way to protect us, to make it presentable to town meeting, to say, "Do you want to sell it or not?" To me, it's a perfect scenario, because the heavy lifting and all the work starts after our ability to say, "Yes, try to sell it with all the options you have." The real work is going to be afterwards, not before. We have no right to sell it. We're going to get that right, I hope. And then we can say, "What are the options?" And one of them's going to be, hopefully, affordable housing, if it's worth it, if anybody out there wants to pay the money, to do it. But all we're looking for tomorrow is say, "Yes, try to sell it with these restrictions." And that's what this is all about. There was no way that we say we're going to create all these options and all the scenarios from the experts. Okay, town meeting, what do you think of this idea? That's not the idea. All we're asking, can we sell it? Will the marketplace take it for us and do something acceptable? And we have restrictions when that comes. We have zoning. We have variance. We have dollar value. We have land restrictions. We have egress. All those restrictions will have to be included. And we have to structure the building. And, as Mr. McDonald said, bigger than ever is the use of the EPA, the high -- what's the timetable there?
Well, as I understand it, the lease is until 2025.
Who knows? Maybe they're going to do another 20 houses. What are they going to say? "No, we got to take the land back?"
Hey, we don't know.
We don't know that either.
We don't know exactly how many more houses that they intend to.
Well, if they do plenty.
Remediate.
Yeah.
So, that's, to me, that's more important than anything else. Just because, just because we're asking permission to sell the building doesn't necessarily mean we're going to sell the building.
Well, and doesn't it not bide us time?
I'm on record right now of saying, "I am not in favor of looking to sell that building at this time because of the use of the EPA," you know, that backlog. And I think it would be ridiculous to sell the building and not the backlog, because it doesn't make it an attractive parcel. So, I'm on record as saying I'm not in favor of that right now. Only if it's new, Christian. Only if it's new.
What do you mean by that?
Any new information. If it's a rehash of what's going on.
We don't want it.
We're not going to need it.
It's not a rehash, but I think after spending, at this point, a year on this project and a citizen of this town, and having had multiple emails ignored at this point, I think I would have the right to come up here and publicly speak about where I stand and what I've watched happen from the sidelines while trying to keep my mouth closed on this project. If you all go back and watch that meeting, it specifically was said that a mini committee was going to be established in order to help create the article for town meeting, but more importantly, to come up with some different options to present to the select board, to then determine what was going to be in that article. And Sue reached out multiple times.
Okay. What was said was to come up with the article for this. As Mr. Tattelbaum said, once that's -- whatever happens tomorrow, good, you know, up or down, okay, the next step is determine what's going to happen with that building, okay? And that committee's still there. I don't have -- I still foresee that happening, okay? It's just, this is just a step to give us something legal, because if not, we're going to have to wait till October. And if not, you know, doesn't -- so, I mean, this is not a done deal. It's far from a done deal.
Maybe.
It's far from a done deal.
Well, if it gets shot down tomorrow, then it's a done deal. And that's why Sue is supposed to be involved in helping create the verbiage for that article.
No, it's not. No. Even if town meeting does not give us permission to sell the property, we still can figure out what to do with the property. It doesn't stop us from doing anything. It doesn't stop us. All it stops us from doing is selling the property.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous.